Number three, we have to wait for that school item to come in.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is six o'clock PM. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order for February 7th, 2023. We give the floor to the Honorable Councilman William Parker Jr. to introduce this evening's invocation.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the Assistant Pastor of the East Side, the Church of God, Sister Kathleen James, who's going to give us our invocation this evening.
Good evening. I want to read Micah 6:8. He has shown you, O man, what is good and what does the Lord require of you, but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this opportunity to come together, to be able to work together as a city and as neighbors, to better our city and to improve our city, to help those that are in need. We ask your blessings over this meeting tonight, that you would bless each council person, that you would bless the administration, that you would bless those in the audience who are here to observe and to participate in their government. We ask that you would bless us and help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of us. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll remain standing for a moment of silence. We remember those in your families, in your neighborhoods, your congregations, your workplaces, your organizations, and those that you love and care for, who we have lost as a community. And we especially want to give a moment of silence to remember a 31-year-old neighbor of ours working on Auburn, on the east side, Auburn and MLK, who during a robbery suffered a gunshot wound. And so she is in critical but stable condition is the last status that I heard. But let us please lift up our neighbor in prayer, well wishes, and remember her now with this moment of silence, as we, as a community, wish her well. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman. James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Goodman from this evening's meeting for personal reasons?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson that we excuse Councilman Michael Goodman from this meeting for personal reasons. We send him our love and well wishes, as he lost somebody that was very close to him, very suddenly and very unexpectedly. And we wish him and his loved ones all the very best in this trying time. Roll call on approval of the motion to excuse Councilman Goodman for personal reasons. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, and he is hereby excused. So tonight, we are gathering as neighbors to elevate and reflect on what Councilwoman James just shared with this evening's invocation. We come together as neighbors to help improve our community by making decisions to move our city forward. And on that note, is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that we approve this evening's agenda. Any discussion? Any amendments, changes, clarifications, questions? Here we go. Roll call on adoption and approval of the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved, and we will proceed accordingly. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. For the public's benefit, it includes three sets of meeting minutes: the January 27th Communications Engagement and Operations Subcommittee, the January 27th Facilities and Property Subcommittee, and the most recent regular City Council meeting of January 31st. With that, roll call and adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We are now at our special presentations this evening. Our first special presentation is from the Pontiac Public Library, for them to share with us the exciting upcoming programming activities that they have at their important and illustrious institution in our community. We give the dais over to the leadership crew that's with us tonight. And when you come into the microphone, you want to hit the button to the right to activate that microphone. And when the light is on, we'll know it's live. Correct, it's live. And the 10 minutes begin now, and that does not include, it does not count against you for 10 minutes for the questions and feedback that will follow. With that, the Honorable Rosie Lance Richardson, Chair of the Library Board, has the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
I did accidentally nix your microphone. If you can turn that microphone back on.
Was that on purpose?
I was trying to turn mine on and off. Sorry.
Okay. Well, everybody laughs. I still know everybody. I have your attention. It's good to be here before you this evening. We're excited about the Pontiac Public Library and what we have to offer you. First and foremost, I would like to introduce to you our new director, Kevin Brown, from Atlanta, Georgia. And I've explained to him, this is Michigan. It might be nice one day, but it'll freeze the next day. So he didn't wear a coat this evening, but I don't want him to just say, "Good evening to you." And then we're going to turn it over to our interim director, who her last day will be on Friday. And I explained to her that we may kidnap her, just so that she could stay on board to help him out. He's done an excellent job. We're looking forward to Mr. Brown doing an excellent job also. Mr. Brown.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to say hello how excited I am to be here and looking forward to working with many of you or all of you any way we can to, for the library to help the progression of the city. As soon as I get an email, I'll start passing it out. That should be shortly. And like I said, just excited and looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
I just want to say this. A lot of you in this room, I haven't seen you at our events, and I know where you live, and I have your cell phone numbers. I will be blowing up your cell phones, and I will be coming by your house. We have a lot of exciting things, so as Colleen presents to you, please come out and support us. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk about our programming that we have for the winter going on. It's all, we have a lot of exciting things coming up. We have ongoing program and then programming and then featured programming. So the first thing that we have is our, part of our ongoing program, we work with the Art Experience. And the Art Experience is an adult program. They come, they do art classes at the library, and you, they're coming Wednesdays throughout the wintertime, and you can sign up for these classes. You do have to pre-register for the Art Experience. We also have Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union is having Saturday meetings with financial experts, and these are financial guidance for adults programs. And you can find out how to check and protect your credit score, among other things, how to spot a scam. So those are some really good classes. Then we have the Women's Self-Defense Seminar, which is highlighting learning how to protect yourself. And Representative Andrea Moon from, she's a fourth-degree black belt. She will help you learn a variety of self-defense moves. And this is an upcoming program on a Saturday. And then one really exciting program, and this one is every other Saturday. This one is for teens, and it's Robotics and Automation Program. And it is run by the Eon STEM Academy and also Comerica Bank. And we had, we started February 11th, but it's not too late to sign up for that. So you can make, or I mean, I'm sorry, we started two weeks ago, and it's again on February 11th. And so it's not too late to sign up, even though you missed one, you can still sign up for that and come to that. So that's, that's a really exciting one. The Pontiac Chess Club meets every Saturday for youth. These are youth programs from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And for the young kids, we started in February and March, our Free Winter Camp. So during this programming, we have painting with artist Francine. We have Sounds of Music with Maestra Miller. We have Creative Chefs with Chef Lonnie, and Storytelling with Tiffany. And so each of these takes place on Wednesdays throughout February and March for the young children under fifth grade, and they're all in the youth room. Then we have two really exciting Black History Month programs coming up. We have this one, which is February 18th from 1:00 to 5:00. We are featuring several authors. We have a musician violin player coming. And we also have John Kohasi to come and speak about the Jones Brothers Record Collection, which is his collection, which is housed at the public library. And he will be talking about his record collection on that day. And then the second Black History Program is the next week, the 25th, and that's another exciting event. And as you can see, we have several guest speakers that we're going to feature at a roundtable. We have Mr. Gil Garrett. We have Ms. Kenyatta Bowman. We have Mr. Bill Proctor from Channel 7 News. We have Mr. Tim Kimball, and we have the Honorable Alexander Hughes. And these are all doing a roundtable. And then we have many other events going on. We have, that day, we have vendors, we have food. You'll get to try food from around, vendors from around the city. And also, there's a Black History Essay Contest that's going on, which the essays are due by this Friday, so that's for teens. And if, so if you know any teens, there's gonna, that want to turn in the essay, they can do that by Friday. So all of these things are in our newsletter, which is here. Outside, we have the newsletters, we have the flyers for all of these events. So don't forget to pick up all that stuff before you go home, so you can remember all these things. And of course, at our events, they're all free, and they all, we all have, we always have snacks and some sort of food to, for you to enjoy as well. So those are our winter programs. And that's the essay contest, which I've already spoken about. All right. I think that's it. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much. And before we're done with this special presentation, we're going to give you a standing ovation for your decades of service to education, literacy, and enrichment in our communities, since you're here with us.
Okay.
Councilman Rutherford, I saw a hand.
Yes. So my question is to the administration, can we put up this flyer to run it on our communications, so that people know, are aware of the essay and are aware of the event? As far as on the TV, please. All right. Good job. That's all.
Councilwoman James. Microphone.
Could you repeat the name of the new director?
The new director is Mr. Kevin Brown.
Thank you.
Other questions or feedback? And to you and the entire leadership team of the Pontiac Public Library, we welcome opportunities to collaborate. The municipal government, our youth recreation programs, and more that we haven't even anticipated yet, that we have an open door and an open hand and an open ear, so that way we can maximize your important institution, the important mission you have. So that way, we are not only neighbors, but partners, since we are serving the same community. And we're grateful for the work that you do. Many, many of the people that power the library are volunteers or doing it out of the love of their heart at a very limited income. It's, people aren't in the library to get rich, but we are grateful for the work that you've done.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your support. I look forward to seeing you come to our programs, like Ms. Richardson said, and, you know, we have a lot to offer. And our website has all of this on it, too. So anything you want to find out is on the website, in the newsletter, on Facebook, all over the place, in case you forget what I said.
And a reminder that in the spring, if you still like a free little library, we still have some available, and we will have it installed for you if you want it at, at your house or around your community. We still have some available, if you would like one. Absolutely. Kenyatta will be at your house and bring one, okay? So, and we also, every time we have an event, we also provide books. That is what we do. And we have tons of books, and our friends, our Friends of Libraries group is coming together, and we're going to have more books. And so the kids, I believe kids should start their own little libraries, so they'll be able to start their own little libraries, and those free of charge. And we're excited about it.
Thank you. President Protem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I'm glad you mentioned free libraries, I mean, free little libraries. Of course, a few of ours need some maintenance.
How about we just replace yours? Because I think we put doors on yours, and we just probably need to.
Well, that's a sign that's been used a lot by the youth, right?
Okay. You think we just need to replace it?
Okay.
Okay, we'll just replace it, okay?
It sounds good.
Just, just text me and remind me, and when spring comes and the ground is thawed, we will replace your library.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Rutherford.
I was going to ask you if you could put one on Argyle, by the little mini park on Argyle Avenue. That would be great.
Just remind me.
No worries.
Okay, in the spring, then we will get one up for you, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right. And we will be having a meeting agreed to formally introduce our, our new director. So please, when we extend the invitation, we'd love to have you come out.
Any further discussion? With that, I know that you don't look it, but you have for many, many decades served the Pontiac community through Pontiac School District. Colleen, can you share, for the community's benefit, how many years and all the different schools that you worked at?
I don't know if I can share. It was pretty much every school in Pontiac. And I started in Pontiac as a band director in 1987, and I got my library degree. And I started in the libraries in 1997. And I finished, I did retire in 2019, only to come back and still do the same job, basically, that I was doing in 2019. So I have served the Pontiac community all of those years, and have thoroughly enjoyed it. I enjoy the community. I enjoyed the children and the libraries, you know. Over the course of the years, the libraries have, we've lost staff in the school district, and hopefully, maybe someday, that can be brought back. But because really, I'm the only librarian left in the school district, and I'm at Pontiac Middle School. So anyway, but I have enjoyed my time here, and it's, I've been at, like I said, every school practically. I wasn't at Pontiac Central. I was at Pontiac North. Yeah, I know, sorry.
All right.
On behalf of the Pontiac community, let us have a standing ovation for your decades of service through the schools and continued through the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman James.
We also need to, on behalf of the City Council, welcome the new director, Mr. Kevin Brown. I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to officially, but we want to welcome you to the city. Please feel free to reach out to us if, if you need anything. And I know our weather is going to be kind of shocking to you, but I'm a Georgian myself, so I, I understand fully, but welcome to our city.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Can't wait to get started.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next special presentation, as you may recall, February 2022 is Black History Month in the city of Pontiac and throughout our nation. And the City Council adopted a resolution reiterated reinforcing that at the most recent City Council meeting. So now that February is upon us, I want to draw attention that a number of Pontiac historical figures from the African-American community and important events and trends and storylines from our history have been enlarged and reproduced and placed throughout Pontiac City Hall. There is more even to come. And really, I just wanted to let the community know that that's here, and it'll be on display throughout the public commons areas of City Hall. But also, we welcome and we strongly request other images to be shared. And it truly can be your family, you know, a group shot, a matriarch or patriarch of the family, maybe those that came here first for the community. The most important element is that we'll just need a high-quality photo, and want to make sure that we get the spelling correctly. Every one of the Black families of Pontiac is Black history. And we want to be able to celebrate that and chronicle and capture that for generations to come. And it is a sad fact and reality that history is sometimes written by those who are left. And to carry on the memory and legacy of your families and your neighbors, people that we've lost, but people that are still with us, it's really fascinating part of American history, as well as Pontiac's story. So you can submit that through the City Council office. In the, in the meantime, we can help make sure that that gets reproduced and saved for future years, so that Pontiac's Black history can be more thoroughly reached to others. And on that note, I also want to welcome now to the podium Rosanna Hall and Fred Saffold from General Motors, where they can share out to the community a great opportunity for another exhibit that is coming to the Pontiac community for Black History Month. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, President McGinnis and President Protem, or, yeah, right, Carrington and, and the government and the staff. I, I do work for GM here in Pontiac Engineering Center. Fred does not work for GM. He is the founder of the True Black History Museum, which is a traveling tabletop museum, and it is coming to Pontiac on Friday. And we are very excited that GM is presenting this to the community and that M1 is hosting at their event center on Woodward. So I will let Fred actually talk a little bit about this. We do have flyers. I shared it with, with the City Council. We have electronic copies. The school district has already put it on their Facebook page. The Pontiac Regional Chamber has already started to promote this, but we ask that each of the council folks to please share it with your districts, share it with your distribution lists. And this is a really phenomenal opportunity to see, engage with real history. It's artifact-based. I only found out about it Thursday, and I'm very, very excited about it, and knew that we needed to bring that here to the city of Pontiac. So today, tomorrow, and Thursday, it is at GM Warren Tech Center for that, those employees. We were looking to bring it to the Pontiac Engineering Center, but knew that there needed to be a larger audience opportunity in, in Pontiac. So Friday from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, open, free to the public at the M1 concourse Vent Center on Woodward across from, you come in across from Avon Donut. So I know, everybody knows that specific spot, and so please come in through there. Bring your family, bring your kids, bring your friends, and really engage in this conversation. And at this point, I will let Fred speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to the esteemed council. My name is Fred Saffold. I'm the founder of the True Black History Museum. We're a traveling Black History Museum founded in 2010 for two reasons. Number one, to preserve the history of Black people. And number two, to share with the world that people of African descent, Black people, African Americans, have value and have made significant contributions to humanity the world over. We, since 2010, we've been to 40 states, and tens of thousands of people have seen our exhibits in corporate spaces, K-12, K-12, prisons, youth homes, churches, wherever we get an opportunity to, to share this gift. I'm not a member of the community, but I'm a member of the Trinity Missionary Baptist Church, which is here in Pontiac. And I had the wonderful opportunity to, to work with Brother Payne, who's one of my fraternity brothers, on Black history. He used to do He used to do the reenactments, and we collaborated years ago at, at a couple of school districts. The exhibit that's going to be on display Friday is called "A Tribute to the African-American Journey," and it's just that, it's a, it's a snapshot into, into the, the journey of African-Americans. There'll be African artifacts, there'll be artifacts that'll go through, again, ancient Africa, the slave period, the slave era, civil rights, black power, let me backtrack to Civil War, Reconstruction, civil rights, black power era. And then we celebrate African-Americans in the arts, sciences, sports, entertainment, politics, really all the way up to the modern day. So we have, we have artifacts dating from the 1600s to the modern day. We do not have a brick and mortar museum. So we go out to spaces and convert that space into the museum. So I urge the esteemed council, everyone that's here, to come out. It is, it's more than a, than a exhibit. It's, it's a collection of, of lived experiences. And I'll cut it short at that point, but again, she mentioned, we're going to be here Friday, open to the public, at 2:00 p.m. to 6:00, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Free.
Free to the public. Bring the elders, bring the young people. I see earlier, as I came in, somebody was, was, was taping up the red, black, and green, Black Liberation colors given to us by Marcus Garvey. If you come out, you, you may see a hand-signed document by Marcus Garvey. So that being said, I mean, I'll take any questions, and I, I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, both for being here. Councilman Rutherford?
So in the exhibit, do you have, and how many parts are going to be displayed? I know you said the eras, but what, like specifically, the 1955 to 64, y'all doing, how are y'all doing the sequence?
Well, the, what we'll do, we, we start with ancient Africa. We start with Africa. It'll, it'll be a snapshot of everything. It'll be about 125 artifacts, starting with antiquity, if you will, all the way up to the modern day and everything in between. It's a, it's a living, breathing entity each day. As Ms. Hall mentioned, we're at General Motors now. We set up an exhibit today. That exhibit might look a little different tomorrow. We've got, we've got two, two teams traveling nationally. We're in the midst of a 22-state tour, and we're here. We're home-based, and it's a blessing to be able to be here in Michigan. I really want to provide this, this opportunity for, you know, for the Pontiac community.
Thank you so much for coming. I look forward to seeing the exhibit.
One other, one other thing I want to mention, and we'll continue to take questions, is we are, we are hoping to collaborate between what Fred has established and the Pontiac Transportation Museum too. As Pontiac Transportation Museum is looking to open in, in the summer, their Phase One, we're going to be in conversation, like I said, Fred and I are just best friends since Thursday. So we are going to be in conversation on how can we have this more in this community and available to the, to the public. Can't, can't guarantee it's going to be free at that point, but, but I just want to let you know that this is the beginning of a conversation. We do want to have a K-12 conversation with the school district and other opportunities, really, to enrich and provide this, this experience. So, whoops, other questions?
Councilman Kathleen James?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Will we be able to take pictures of the artifacts, or can you take pictures at the displays?
Yes, ma'am. In addition to taking pictures, it's an engaging exhibit. There's QR codes that give you additional information on some of the artifacts. So we encourage people to take pictures, engage with the exhibit. There'll be hand-signed documents by Dr. King, Barack Obama, Shirley Chisholm, Malcolm X, and really, everybody, everybody in between.
Further discussion? Thank you very much, and to reiterate, the True Black History Museum, Traveling Black History Experience comes to the Pontiac community this Friday, February 10th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., the M1 Concourse Event Center on Woodward Avenue. The entrance to use is the one directly across from Avon Donuts on Woodward Avenue.
We do have posters and flyers, so I can leave some of those here, and, and please take them to your communities. And look on different organizations' Facebook page, and please, share it. We want it beyond Pontiac, but to extend it to our neighbors to come and see this. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, that concludes special presentations. We are at recognition of elected officials. We have a number of elected officials with us this evening. Would the Charter Revision Commission Chair Tanika Ramsey like to have the floor?
Yeah.
All right. And we have School Board Vice President and School Board Treasurer, Kenyatta Bowman and Shaquana Davis-Smith. Would either of you like to have the floor for elected officials? Okay, we'll be on deck.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So our last meeting, I want to say it was last Thursday, or the Thursday before, was great. We actually, I believe we are starting to get in the meat and potatoes of the charter. And what the Charter Revision Commission has decided is that we will go through each part of the charter, department by department, to make changes, talk to the community, but also engage the council and the mayor, mayor's office, so that we can talk to some of the staff that would be directly impacted by some of the things on the charter. Next month, this month, this month, because we're in February, this month, we will continue to go over why there needs to be a charter revision, what does that mean to the community? And then in March, we will talk about the form of government that Pontiac currently has. Right now, we have a strong mayor form of government. We discussed the two parts of government, so the strong mayor form and the city manager form. We will be out in the community, coming to some of the council meetings, coming to public events to talk about the types of government that this city could have. We have had a strong mayor form of government since the creation of this, the charter, and maybe people want to change that. Maybe they want to keep it the same. But we want to make sure that education is a part of that, and what does that mean, right? What does that mean to taxpayers? If we have a council who has more responsibility? If we go with the city manager form of government, what does that mean for our tax base and increasing to make sure that we're paying people to do the job, or do we stay the way that we are? So that will be March. We will be talking about that. But each month, we will go over each section of the charter to talk about what it means and to answer any questions, and then do community engagement around that part for that month. We look for comments from the public. You can either do it through the coming to the charter meeting, you can email us, you can reach out to us via Facebook, because we now have a Facebook page. And I would like to thank Commissioner Ibarra and Ms. Bridges here at the city for doing an amazing job at getting that up and going. Thank you.
And so before you walk away, we're talking about the Fourth Thursday in, in February?
Yes, the Fourth Thursday of every month, we will be meeting.
So it looks like that's for Mar, February and March, that's the 23rd.
Okay.
So February 23rd at 6?
6 o'clock, yes.
Okay.
The only month that we are trying to figure out is May, and that is because council will be doing budgeting, and so we are looking for a place to pop a squat, so if anybody knows, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. The Honorable Kenyatta Bowman, Pontiac School Board Vice President.
You all need a stool up here, so. Good evening, Council President, Pro Tem Carrington, Mayor Grimal, and Council. I would just like to say that I was born and raised right here in the city of Pontiac. I've had the pleasure to live in every district in this community. So in a sense, each one of you represents me, and I represent you because I am a product of Pontiac, who so happens to be an elected official. So what I am about to say is for myself and for all of you. We represent each other. No matter what I do, no matter where I go, I'm a product of Pontiac, born and raised right here. When we greet each other, when we see each other, when we see other members in the community, one of our duties is to treat people with decency and respect. How we treat people is a reflection of us, not them, is a reflection of us. With that being said, I hope that we can continue to work together. I believe that every person in this room has a vision of how they would like to see Pontiac move forward, and we may have different methods on how that is to get done, but we all want the betterment of this community. But we must keep in mind on how we treat each other, how we treat the people in this community, because just like they got us in these seats, they will get us out. So it's time for our community to work together and come together, put all of these personal things aside, and really push for the betterment of this community, because it's about Pontiac. For way too long, this community has been taking a backseat, and everyone taking advantage of this community and not putting the people first. So as elected officials, let's put our community first and put our personal egos and everything else that we have aside, and remember, how we treat people is a reflection of ourselves, not the person we're interacting with. I love this community, I represent this community wholly in every facet. So thank you all for electing me, and I hope with everything that I do, that you all know that I have the best for myself, for my family, and for my community, always on the forefront of my mind. So thank you very much.
The Honorable Shaquana Davis-Smith, Pontiac School Board Treasurer. Happy early birthday, P.S.
Thank you. Happy belated birthday. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shaquana Davis-Smith, and I'm a business owner for P's and Q's Bakery and Cafe, as well as a School Board Treasurer. I'm coming before you guys tonight because some of, some of our small businesses and some of our students who have small businesses asked me to speak on their behalf. And so I'm here because we have heard since the Waterman Administration that there will be grant funding and support for small Pontiac businesses. During COVID, many cities provided support to their local businesses. Small businesses in Pontiac did not have this opportunity. We had to complete, we had to compete with all Oakland County businesses. There has, there has been a former mayor coming to these meetings weekly, talking about American Rescue Plan Act funding, and yet businesses have, have yet to hear about any programming or funding. My business and others have been, and are continuing to struggle, looking for our city to help and support us when is, so when is the support and help will be coming? That is it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials currently representing the Pontiac community that wish to have the floor this evening? That concludes recognition of elected officials. We are now at agenda address. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests for agenda address tonight?
Yes, we have a few, President McGinnis. Mr. Davis scales, I don't see him in, in the chambers. Mr. Chuck Johnson, what item on the agenda address?
Item I want to speak on, don't have a number.
Is it on the agenda?
It's on the agenda. It had to be the last item on the agenda, public comment.
Okay.
As the, as the mayor and the chair, or the council notice in the room, there's several people that, that are here and may have something very well to speak about or talk about, like me. And I keep asking the same question over and over again, week after week, and we don't get a response, and we don't get any action. It's certainly important to the citizens of, of Pontiac, the folk who want to come here and speak, do not want to sit here all night to speak. We lose a lot of information that's very relevant to this council and to the mayor, when we allow people to walk back out of that door and don't get a chance to speak. Now, someone at that table needs to say something in your closing comments as to why. You will not move closing comments for the public to speak. You need to tell us why you won't move it, and put it up closer to the top of the agenda so that we can have an opportunity to express our concerns. And it's not fair to the public, it's not fair to the taxpayers, and it's not fair to yourselves, and including the mayor, because there are things that we need to say out here, you need to hear. And we don't want to see people just walk back out that door. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Larry Jasper, I don't see him in the chambers. Yeah, that concludes our agenda address, President McGinnis.
All right, we are at item number three, ordinances, adoption of city of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to postpone this item based on, we're still looking for feedback from the planning commission. That was an interest last week to postpone until after that feedback came back, but procedurally, we just needed to wait until it came up on the agenda, and we're only able to postpone it for one week. So I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item for one more week.
I'll support.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington, that this ordinance proposal be postponed until the February 16th, 2023 city council meeting. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the proposal, the, the motion to postpone on this item for one week. Clerk Doyle?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Was I a yes?
Yes.
Okay, first one. All right. So that motion carries, the item is postponed until the next regular city council meeting, and friendly housekeeping item, next Tuesday is Valentine's Day. And since Pontiac is for lovers, we did not schedule the city council meeting to fall on that, so your date night is intact. The next meeting is February 16th, so that's when that was postponed too. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish a proposed budget amendment to transfer $15,000 in funding out of the general fund and into public notices?
I'll move. Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. That motion is now before us. Give the floor to the clerk to provide context. Again, this is just starting the process. In two weeks, it'll come back for us to actually consider it, but this allows us to put the notice out. Clerk Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. The public notices in the clerk's budget consist of, we have to put a notice in the paper every time there's a budget amendment, public hearings, and all other type of notice, official notices. So we've utilized, we only allocated $10,000 in the budget for this. As of the end of the year, we had accumulated $10,850 worth of billing. So this is just to put money into that account, so we'll be able to continue to publish those notices as required by the charter or ordinances.
Very good. Councilman Nicholson?
You know, we have members of the Charter Commission here. This is an area where I'll definitely send an email, so that way, you know, you can get also maybe some legal opinion. This amount, I mean, we keep coming back to this every, it seems like every three weeks, and adding more and more and more and more money. And clearly, that is something during the budgeting process that we're going to be more attuned to this year, so that way we don't have to publish as many notices. But this is a huge sum, and by the end of the year, we're, I mean, it's, it's a lot. While it's required by law, it's also required by the charter, and it sort of like flows us into a certain path and a place where we need to publish this. And as we know, there are many periodicals that are published widely within the city of Pontiac, both in print and electronic, and of course, we want to get the most, you know, notifications out for the, and being for our buck, but if there's anything that can be done to be more thoughtful with these dollars, it certainly just seems like a place where we continue to shovel funds, and, and our hands are really tied due to the charter restrictions.
Yeah, in terms of posting in our newspaper of general circulation for planning purposes, we discussed that in recent weeks for, and now in this instance, in terms of various different items that require it. Thank you for elevating that. Any further discussion on this motion before us? It authorizes the clerk to post notice of this budget amendment. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, brother president. I just wanted to ask a question, that in lieu of what we just said, is, is what we're asking for now enough?
Clerk Doyle, any feedback on that?
I believe so. As I stated, we spent just over $10,000 for the first half of the fiscal year, since the fiscal year starts July 1st to the end of the year, so that's why I asked for $15,000.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the motion before us, on resolution authorizing the city clerk to publish that proposed budget amendment for public notices. Clerk Doyle, roll call.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment, increasing budget revenues in the amount of $392,500, and this is related to, you know, United Way of Southeastern Michigan Grant Agreement that will be And this is related to United Way of Southeastern Michigan grant agreement that we'll be hearing more about, but this is essentially posting the notice so we can consider the budget amendment in two weeks. Is there such a motion?
I'll support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman President Pro Tem Carrington, that we consider the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Mayor Grimald Administration, for context, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Before I invite our Grants Director, Alex Borngesser, to the podium, I do just want to commend her and her entire department, she has a lot of excellent staff who work with her, for their hard work in continuing to secure grant dollars. This is an amount of $392,500, nearly $400,000 in grant dollars from United Way for youth recreation programming, supplies, materials, anything relating to bolstering our youth recreation activity. And we're just very grateful for Director Borngesser's hard work and the hard work of her staff. That relates to the next agenda item as well, so I'll just say that for both agenda items, if I may do so, Mr. President. And Director Borngesser, do you have anything to add about the nature of this grant?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item and the next item are related, of course. This is a $392,500 grant from United Way, which is actually American Rescue Plan dollars from Oakland County. As a pass-through through United Way, they will be programming the resources. As the mayor said, this is all for youth recreation activity in the City of Pontiac. But I did want to make one note, which you'll see in the scope, that this actually offsets the personnel budget here at the city by $200,000, which has been our objective, is to kind of work in indirect cost fees and staff time to grant-related activities.
Thank you. Questions on the motion before us? Councilman Nicholson.
Yeah, the offset comment, I think, is one thing that when we continue to hear budget amendments and we're moving funds from one employee account and creating a new position like we did with the purchasing assistant, you know, it always seems like we're spending more money, but it's through your efforts that we're able to spend the same amount of money and get, you know, and go twice as far. So I can say it's just, it's astounding, and I love every time you get up, Councilwoman Rutherford asks the same question, and it seems redundant, but it's because we're excited to hear that number grow every single time. So, you know, it's impressive, and I can't wait to continue to resource your department.
Great.
Councilman Rutherford.
Way to go, Alex.
I would like to note that this was actually written primarily by Mike Martin from the Grants Team. Mike spent a lot of time writing the application, specifically the case for support, the narrative sections. Renee Hall from my team goes through all of the compliance. She makes sure that the budgets mirror the needs of the funder. And then Tanisha Taylor from the Rec Department actually gave input on the program description. So this type of work is really a team effort. I'm just the one that's lucky enough to stand at the podium.
Always a pleasure.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, did I hear you say that part of the $392,500 would be used to offset staffing? Because I'm wondering, are we going to get this $392 to be used for additional recreational programming, or is, how's that gonna divvy up?
So if you look at, and I'm sorry, there's quite a bit of material here, but if you look at page 10 of 13 in the scope, or scope of work, you'll see the full budget. There is $200,000 for personnel worked into that budget. In the budget amendment portion, you'll see that the finance team did parse that out in terms of full-time staff members and part-time seasonal, so there's a little discrepancy in the way it's cut up and applied here at City Hall. But in the budget here, you'll see $200,000. This is to offset the cost of personnel. We did use and establish the indirect cost fees based on the current salaries of those individuals. This grant application was written long ago, and then that actually will supplement the total cost of their salaries throughout the remainder of the year.
Okay, but approximately, how much do you think will actually go into additional youth recreation?
The remainder of the grant.
Okay.
Yep, beyond the $200,000. The $200,000 is covering personnel, meaning staff time, and then the remainder of the grant goes towards contractual services, meaning programming, wraparound services, food, transportation, equipment, supplies, occupancy, things of that nature.
So about $190?
Yes.
Approximately, okay.
And I show that the term of the agreement goes through December 31st, 2024, so the granting entity that is, sort of covers basically between now and the end of the calendar year 2024, that's the, sort of the cycle of it.
That is correct, and you'll see a lot of that happening right now. 2024 is the end date, given the use of American Rescue Plan funds.
Any further discussion? So the motion before, Councilman Rutherford.
Repeat what you just said again.
You'll see a lot of that in the grant space right now because it's a use of American Rescue Plan funds. This is American Rescue Plan funds from Oakland County that United Way is distributing on behalf of the county.
No, not that part, the part where you said the money has to be used by when?
Twenty, per the grant agreement, 2024, the end of 2024.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? This resolution authorizes the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment, so that way the committee knows that it's coming for ultimate decision two weeks from now. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the clerk is authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment. We are at our next resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Tim Grimald to execute the United Way of Southeastern Michigan Master Grant Agreement, 2022, 2023?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. That motion is now before us. The administration has spoken to this. Any discussion on the motion before us? This authorizes the mayor to execute the terms of the master grant agreement with the granting entity. As we share, these are Oakland County American Rescue Plan funds that are being administered and distributed by the United Way for Southeastern Michigan. Councilman Rutherford.
So it says that you guys are gonna have reporting dates on the April the 14th, 2023. Will we be able to see the reports as you so use the money at that time?
The director's coming back.
Fumbling today. I believe your question was that you'd like to see the reports as we provide them. Would you like to see them specifically for this grant or for all of the grants going forward?
No, I just wanted to know how the money's being spent, because it says it's a timeline of reporting, so I just want to see when, what have we spent, what was allocated, how do we do it, just for this particular one, because it has to do with the youth for the summer program, so.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide that. Just to keep in mind, we provide reporting on all of our grant awards, so we do monthly, quarterly, or perhaps yearly reports to all of our funders.
Thank you so much.
And to that point, we might, at the subcommittee level, work out a system so that way it's not burdensome, or, you know, sort of which one rises the level of needing to be carbon copied on those various items, just so we can see that. So I'll defer to finance and personnel or Parks Recreation, Public Works on where that makes sense. Any further discussion on the motion before us? The resolution would authorize the mayor to execute the master grant agreement, and again, we're very grateful to your team, your staff, the city staff, that has helped secure this important resources to allow us to expand the positive work for Pontiac's youth. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the mayor is hereby authorized to execute that master grant agreement. Get your signing hand ready. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment to increase budget revenues in the amount of $294,000 and appropriations in the amount of $150,000 for other professional services for Ruth Peterson Senior Center and $144,000 for other professional services for the Bowen Senior Center?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. That motion is before us. The grant, good news continues for Pontiac taxpayers. Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
Indeed, President McGinnis. Good news does continue to roll in. This relates to improvements at the senior centers. And as I think, certainly all of council knows, but I think many members of the community know as well, we commenced renovations at both the Bowen Center and the Ruth Peterson Center in December, using a variety of sources, including some grant dollars as well as community development block grant funds as well. That renovation that already began is in the amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars, but there is more work that needs to be done at the senior centers beyond what that round of renovations will be able to do with the amount of money available in that initial round. And so Director Borngesser and her team, again, got to work and secured some additional grant dollars from Oakland County to increase the amount of work and the scale of renovations that are being done at the senior centers. Normally, this would require some matching dollars, but because of our Grants Department's magic, they were able to persuade the county to count some of the other grant dollars, including, my understanding is, the CDBG dollars, towards that matching requirement. And so this will bring an additional $294,000, almost an additional $300,000, to further enhance and expand the renovations that are happening at both the Bowen Center and the Ruth Peterson Center. Director Borngesser, did I miss anything, or do you have anything to add?
So, thank you, Mayor. That is correct. We secured $144,000 for the Robert Bowen Center and $150,000 for the Ruth Peterson Center. I just did want to make one correction to what the mayor communicated. They did not count our block grant as a match, instead they waived the matching requirement. Block grant wasn't eligible in this instance, but we were able to negotiate and meet in common ground that the city would not be required to provide a match to this funding opportunity. So this will begin to offset additional costs related to the contract that we're currently executing for repairs at the senior centers, and we're very excited.
Further discussion, Councilman Rutherford.
This money is strictly for repairs, so it can't be for the renovations of the computer lab or anything of that nature.
It is not for that specific purpose. However, we did identify an opportunity through AARP that Mike Martin from our team is exploring now for the computer labs and the actual computers themselves. We did get a preliminary cost estimate for those computers from Ken Martin IT, and we're working to submit that application. I believe that's due the 15th of March, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
And that's AARP, not to be confused with ARPA.
It's not it.
Retired persons, not federal.
Correct.
Further discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Nicholson.
Just as a buzz, I don't know what the funding periods are. I know the DeRoy Testimentary Foundation has funded computer labs for agencies that I've worked with before, specifically around seniors. They tend to be interested in seniors and veterans, and we were able to get, at the Community House in Birmingham, we were able to get a senior computer lab funded through DeRoy, so that may be another resource.
Thank you.
Helen DeRoy, or?
The DeRoy Testimentary Foundation.
Testimentary, I would have thought. All right. DeRoy. All right. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman James.
I just want to mention, now that we're talking about computers, hopefully, the ones that we purchased will be computers that are capable of Zoom talks, because the ones that we purchased do not have cameras and they don't have internal microphones, so that, you know, they're new computers, but you can't do Zoom calls and that kind of thing. So if we're gonna purchase computers for the senior center, they should be, you know, up-level computers that are capable of being able to teach seniors the functionality that's being used today.
I'm right with you.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution, authorizing the clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the clerk is hereby authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreements for local fiscal recovery fund distribution between Oakland County and the City of Pontiac for Oakland County Senior Center Matching Grant Program?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This is related to what we were just discussing with the previous item of business for these welcome grant funding resources for both of our senior citizen centers for the City of Pontiac. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the agreement is approved. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve Carlisle Wortman and Associates as a consultant for plan review on a temporary basis for an additional three months?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, it is seconded by Councilman Rutherford. That motion is before us. We give the floor to the mayor administration for context.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This item is fairly self-explanatory in terms of a request to extend the Carlisle Wortman contract for three months. This is necessitated because of the sheer volume of backlog that the planning department inherited when our new city planner came on board, Mark Yandrick, our planning manager, to use his formal title, came on board, and due to the extensive amount of work that's required around the zoning ordinance for marijuana as well. And I'll invite our planning manager, Mr. Yandrick, to the podium to expand on the need for some additional outside contractual services.
Good evening, members of council. The request is that, we had in November, you authorized a three-month contract, and this is a three-month extension that would go till the end of May for the services from Carlisle Wortman, and they are extremely helpful as we're starting to increase. We have 12 items for our upcoming Planning Commission agenda and eight for the zoning Board of Appeals. So this helps offset until we get staff hired and trained, which we anticipate in the next 30 to 45 days for the hiring and beyond that for training.
Any questions? Councilman Nicholson.
Yeah, in our subcommittee, I was excited to hear, one, that the backlog is starting to be addressed. I love to hear that the planning commissioners' heads are spinning because there's so much movement going on, but I think it's really encouraging, and it may be from enforcement and knowing that we have new blood in the planning department, that people are getting their act together and submitting these plans and, you know, really adhering to the process and the procedure of the city. So knowing that there's a lot of action going on is exciting.
Absolutely. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve Carlisle Wortman and Associates as a consultant for plan review on a temporary basis for an additional three months. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
The motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the additional three months are approved. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment to transfer $35,000 for other professional services for planning consulting services?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This authorizes the clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. In two weeks, it'll be before the full council, and this is related to the item of business that was just approved. that was just approved. This is backfilling the dollars to support that contract temporary extension. Mr. Yandrick, anything further that you'd like us to know about this budget amendment? Pretty straightforward?
It is pretty straightforward. The one thing that I would share is this is not increasing the planning department budget, it is just relocating it from salary and wages because we are understaffed at the moment and moving it over to professional services. So, and because it's more than $10,000, it does require your authorization, hopefully in two weeks. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us, which again authorizes the clerk to post the notice? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the clerk is hereby authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving real estate services for a DPW facility search?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The motion is before us. We give the floor to Mayor Grimal and administration for background.
Thanks, President McGinnis. As the community, I'm sure, recalls, the emergency manager sold a lot of city assets while they were here destroying the community in a number of regards. One of the assets that they sold was the city's DPW site off of Weston Street. The city, in recent years, has therefore been leasing some space up near the intersection of Jocelyn and Walton Roads. That lease expires in May of this year, and we're very eager to once again have the city own its own DPW yard that will accommodate all of the needs that our DPW department has. That's become even more important as we've brought a lot of services back in-house that had been privatized and outsourced by emergency management. And so this agenda item relates to making sure that we're identifying the best possible property for that at the most affordable price, and I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into more details.
Thank you, Mayor. So what you have in front of you is a request to approve the city to enter into a contract with CBRE Brokers to actually do the legwork to find the space for us. This is actually a standard real estate brokerage contract. You'll see they're asking for a 3% commission to be paid by the seller, not the buyer, which is awesome. But the reason why this is on your agenda is that we actually did an RFP for services, and we did not know who was going to apply and what minimums they were going to ask for in this particular service, because we're, many people may say, of course, that's what they're going to ask for, that's what real estate brokers ask for. Well, that's what you're used to real estate brokers asking for in residential searches. Commercial searches and industrial searches are sometimes often different, and when I was speaking with the brokerage community, what I found was that a lot of times, they are the smaller firms that will have certain minimums, but a larger firm like CBRE is using a standard contract. But again, we did not know what that price was going to be, so we proactively put it on city council's agenda.
Any discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution approving real estate services for the DPW facility search. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is approved. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve MultiBank Securities, Inc., MBS, to the City of Pontiac's investment policy authorized list of financial institutions for investment purposes?
So moved.
Is there a second? If there is no second?
Yes, move must say.
All right. So it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. The motion is now before us. It would add a financial institution to the Pontiac Investment Policy Authorized List for Investment Purposes. Mayor Grimal and administration, background.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, in a moment, invite up Treasurer Prater to get into all the details, but I do just want to commend Treasurer Prater for her innovative approach to exploring ways that we can more wisely invest the city's money instead of just having it sit in relatively low-yield savings accounts. And so Treasurer Prater has been really proactive in looking at various opportunities to be a little more wise in how the city invests its funds, and I want to thank you, Treasurer, for your hard work in this regard, and invite you to the podium to get into more of the details.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and deputy mayor.
You'll want to hit the microphone, the button to the right. Got it.
Sorry. Again, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and deputy mayor. So this is, this resolution, the resolution before you is to add MBS, MultiBank Securities, Inc., to the already list of authorized financial institutions within the investment policy. If once authorized and approved by you guys, I will be able to consult with MultiBank Securities in terms of investment strategy for a lot of the resources that, you know, the financial resources that the city has. So I'm eager to get this before you. I've been trying for quite some time. I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilman James.
Do you know what their average return on investment would be for, say, the last five years, 10 years?
Well, that's hard to say because there's a wide range of investment options. So I haven't even entertained any options with them yet because they're not approved. So the return on investment just basically determines, is based on the type of investment that I, you know, I go with. So once that is established, then, you know, that's something that I can communicate in the form of an investment report to the finance committee, once it's established.
Councilman Parker?
I just have one question. What made you select this company?
Well, they were recommended by a treasurer that, a former treasurer, can't remember what city she worked for, but she's now an employee here with the City of Pontiac. And we have other banks that's within the investment policy, but they're limited in their investment options because they have to go with what that specific bank's option is. But MultiBank Securities, they have more of a wide range of investment options, long-term, short-term. So I really was interested in this company because they've been around for over 35 years, and they meet all of the requirements within our investment policy to be able to invest with, so.
Next question, pardon me? Follow-up question. So does this include all of the Pontiac monies, including GERS?
No, this doesn't include GERS.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
So Finance Committee made a decision to review our investment policy every year. Last time we reviewed it, for some reason, the only person that was available was the former finance director, and his feedback was pretty limited, just telling us sort of that our hands were tied and that these were the only, you know, types of investments that we could work with. In reading through this, it sounds like you certainly were who we should have been talking to this entire time, because that wasn't, that some of these things that were in here weren't made aware of, we weren't made aware of at that point. So it's exciting to know that there's more aggressive or exciting opportunities than some of the securities that we were looking at before. My interest is that we, Finance Committee should have heard about this first, so we're not, you know, deer in headlights. But aside from that, one thing that we talked about, just for your interest as you go through in working with MBS, our interest was looking at that list of banks that were out there and knowing that then that creates whatever their, you know, options are, sort of limits us in scope, and we're already sort of limited based on what we're allowed to invest in with public funds. We want to work with institutions, and certainly other members of that committee speak up if I don't represent your opinion as well. We want to work with institutions that spend time in Pontiac. We're seeing banks that have come and gone, you know, I haven't seen Comerica Bank do anything around this town, you know, since they moved to Dallas. And, you know, but we have seen other partners like PNC and Huntington and, you know, others come in and really do some good work that offer the same access to securities, maybe not the same management, but if we have, you know, a different opportunity, we certainly want to look at those options of what is their reinvestment in this community, whether it's through time, whether, you know, their employees, you know, participating in cleanups and, you know, building playground structures, you know, we really want to see them put their money where their mouth is because we know they wouldn't jockey for us to park our funds if it didn't make a difference to them. So, you know, I enjoy that there's other opportunities, but as we continue to work with those other financial institutions, we want to sort of have that be, you know, an option on that scoring list.
Understood.
Councilman Rutherford?
Two questions to the administration. Why wasn't this brought before the subcommittee, before you brought this out here?
Do you want to yield?
I yielded to, to find yours to Tim. Either one of them can answer it.
Oversight. Mirror oversight. We spent several weeks, if not a full month, going back and forth, not with the subcommittee, but actually with the city's attorney to make sure that we had all of the right information that we were presenting to the council to ask for the permission to pursue, but again, it was just an oversight.
To, doesn't, isn't it a disservice to the committee and all of us because we haven't had enough time to really go through it?
Make a motion to postpone for one week.
Okay, that's what I was going to do anyway. I just wanted to ask you before I did it, but since you said it, I make a motion to postpone for one week. I think that we need to make sure, it's not that I'm saying no, that's not what it is. I just want to make sure that we're doing, getting more bang for our buck, because every time we spend a dollar up here, we get yielded, and every time we get somebody that want to invest that, we get yielded. So I want us to do our due diligence, people, and give us one week. That's all I'm asking.
The diligent, Councilman moves to postpone for one week. Is there a second? Hearing no second, that motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the main motion on the resolution to approve MultiBank Securities. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick statement. This is only allows the department to actually talk with the company.
Okay.
We're not approving any.
Okay.
We're not transferring any money into anybody's account.
All right, then.
Yeah, so I just want to bring that to the floor.
You're just approving to add them to this list. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I can share for the council that, that it was shared for many weeks with council leadership on will it or won't it come before the full council? So I hear what you were saying in terms of through that purgatory of knowing when it'll be ready to fly, and it did not ultimately go to the subcommittee, but I thank you, the subcommittee chair and others, for flagging that.
And I can, I'm sorry, I can always provide all documents related to MBS, their financial statements, their certificates that are required based on the investment policy to you, and you can distribute or you guys can review it at a later time, but again, this is just to add them to the list.
Councilman Nicholson.
I think it would make sense that we just have you be a standing item on the finance subcommittee, so that way, when things like this happen, then we can ask those questions, and the right person will be able to answer them. You also did provide an incredible amount of information about MBS that really helped me understand that they were a very reputable and viable option, so thank you.
No problem.
Councilman James.
It also would be good possibly to have the treasurer attend our next finance meeting because this is the direction that we had talked about going in, of being able to get more return on the investments that we have for the city. So this is, this is what we had talked about, what we would like to see, and I think the committee would like to know a little bit more about, you know, your perception of the potential for this company and others to be able to, you know, raise our investment profile.
Okay, no problem. That's what I'm working on anyway, and rates are really good right now, which is why I've been wanting this before you guys for quite some time, so that I can take advantage of the interest rate while they're high. So I'll leave it up to you.
Roger that. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve MultiBank Securities, Inc., to the City of Pontiac's Investment Policy Authorized List of Financial Institutions for Investment Purposes. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We are now at public comment. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests?
Yes, President McGinnis. Mr. Norman Ehl.
You're on pass.
You're on pass, okay. That's also Chris Ehl we passing as well? Oh, no. Chris, is it Chris, Chris, Chris Ehl, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Pontiac City Council. First of all, I'd like to say, if I may, thank you, Mayor. Last Tuesday, when you explained what you did, we thoroughly understand, and we want the Pontiac City Council to understand that it was just a question. Please don't take any ill intent. It definitely was not for that. We love you all. That's why we're here, and we just, and we just thank the mayor for that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Wanted to say, we are indeed very happy and still elated that you came together as one body, saying, even from the beginning, that we, that we're giving the Pontiac City citizens an opportunity to participate in the adult-use marijuana, and we continue to say thank you, although that may sound redundant, but we just want to say thank you for your consideration. Thank you for going back, taking a second look, and we're just very happy, and we, as the citizens of Pontiac, we want to look good too, to anybody coming, leaving, wanting to stay, we want to look good too, and we intend to do that. We intend not to disappoint you in any shape, form, or fashion. So we just thank you again, and we look forward to, to good success in that area, if I may say. Thank you so much, everybody.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ehl. Ms. Charlene Dyer or Dyer?
She's not here.
Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Chuck Johnson here again. Very brief comment this evening. You asked me about an item I was going to speak on, but I'm going to speak on this item where number 11, Mayor, if you have that kind of money to spend, spend it on me, because I can name you five places right off the top of my head right now that's suitable for this DPW facility, and I can sit down with you one-on-one. Five beautiful spots that we own. Chair, I'm concerned about how individuals can sit in this chamber and just basically take pictures of individuals who come to this podium or sit around a room. I think you should, you should make some kind of a ruling where taking pictures randomly at citizens or individuals shouldn't be permitted. A lot of folk don't want to be on someone's radar, for the sake of a better term, and I think you should address that in some kind of way. If there's any kind of legal way you can do it, it needs to stop. I had a few other things on my mind, but when I get, when I get fired up here, I forget. What I, the next comment I'm going to bring to you is not appropriate for tonight, but I do have a few more seconds. I'm going to give myself a chance to do a little thinking. Yeah, all right. I'll let that be for tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Larry Jasper?
He's not here.
President McGinnis concludes our public comment.
All right, we are at council communications. The Pontiac Community Foundation is hiring part-time drivers for the M1 Mobility Initiative starting at $20 per hour. Inquire at hr@pontiaccommunityfoundation.org or 248-246-6606. Residents who are behind in paying their water bills or facing a service shut-off can get help from Oakland County Water Resources Commission in OLSA. You can qualify for up to $1,500 in payments and stop a shut-off plan. This temporary program expires September 30th. Schedule an appointment with OLSA by calling 248-209-2600 or emailing info@olhsa.org. I Am Pontiac Summer Internship Program for Young People Ages 16 to 24 has a required info session on February 11th at 9:00 a.m. in person or February 15th at 5:30 p.m. in person. This is through Oakland County Michigan Works. These are eight-week paid internships. Contact 248-276-1777 for more information. Accent Pontiac Winter Showcase is February 8th at 5:30 p.m., held at Flagstar Strand Theater, 12 North Saginaw. Free admission for that program. The Pontiac Public Library Black History Month Essay Contest that you heard about earlier, submission deadline is February 10th. You can submit in person at the library or email jcampew@pontiaclibrary.org. OLSA has a Water Assistance Day on February 10th from 9:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. So about that water program that you heard about, they have appointments available on February 10th between 9:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. You can specifically contact christinew2@olsa.org or barbarajay@olsa.org to schedule an appointment. Find out more if you need help paying your water bill. Black Women's Roundtable Touré Events, and the City of Pontiac has a Blackout Everything Black Expo on February 11th. There's a presentation at 12:00 p.m., and the vendor portion runs from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. That's at United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex on South Boulevard East in Pontiac, free event. Tunes and Serial Art Exhibit opening February 12th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., held at the Tunes and Serial Art Exhibit Opening, February 12th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., held at the Burlingham Lounge, 17 West Lawrence. Live mural painting and a serial bar exhibit runs February 12th through 28. The Pontiac East Side Community Meeting is February 13th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., held at Prospect Church, 351 Prospect Street. You can contact Council President Mike McGinnis for more information. There's a Valentine's Day Concert featuring Alexander Zancheck, James Lloyd, Penny Wells, Chris Krazawa, Mike Carrington, and Jeff Kennedy, February 14th, which is Valentine's Day. Doors at 6:30, concert at 7:30. That's at the Pontiac Little Art Theater, 47 North Saginaw Street. Tickets are $40 per person. Contact Phyllis at 419-280-1073 for more information. Join a community conversation on aging in Michigan. That's on February 14th from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Bowen Senior Center, 52 Bagley Street. This is from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the senior center, the state plan on aging, that is coming together, wants to hear from you on feedback on being an older adult in Michigan. They want to help identify priorities and needs, and how they'll fund it for the state of Michigan, again, Valentine's Day, February 14th. There's a February Wine Dinner at Alley Cat Cafe, February 16th, 6:30 p.m. Alley Cat is at 31 North Saginaw in downtown Pontiac. Five-course meal with intentionally paired wines, tickets $75 per person. Confidence in Our Stories, a 2023 African-American read-in, February 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Pontiac Public Library. Contact at p-u-e-c.org, or jcampo@poniaclibrary.org for more information. Call to Action, Improving Summer Opportunities for Youth is happening February 17th at 10:00 a.m. Doors open at 9:30 a.m. Held at Pontiac's Little Art Theater, 47 North Saginaw Street. This is organized by Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership, and you can visit pontiaccollectiveimpact.org for more information. Straight Ahead, Women in Jazz Event, February 17th, that same night, same location, at the Little Art Theater, 47 North Saginaw. This ticket is free for Pontiac residents, $8 for non-residents, so that's a Women in Jazz Event, live music, happening next Friday night, February 17th, at the Platte. And for the sake of time, I'll leave it at that, but there are other events that are printed on the hard copy of the Jenna, or printed, published online through the city council agenda packet. We turn now to the mayor's office for their closing comments, or, excuse me, their communications.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just two communications. One is an upcoming city event. We, as I've mentioned at past council meetings, we are bringing the operation of the daddy-daughter dance back to the city government. This was a longtime tradition here in the city. In more recent years, it was operated by a private group, but we are reinstituting it as an official city government event. There is a fee associated with it, and it is $30 for a couple, for a father and daughter, so $30 total for both the father and the daughter. If a father has additional daughters who want to participate, it's an additional $10 per additional daughter. And that is going to occur on February 11th, which is a Saturday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Lafayette Grand Ballroom. And folks can pay here at City Hall at the Treasurer's Office downstairs. We've gotten a great response so far, and expect it to be a really great and fun event for the community. And the second item that I want to announce is a great opportunity for both current homeowners in the city and aspiring homeowners. It's a Pontiac Resource Fair for both current and future homeowners. It is sponsored by Oakland County and by I Am the Village Foundation, and so it's going to be hosted both by County Commissioner Angela Powell, as well as Pontiac's own Norbert Burrows, who is not just the founder of the I Am the Village Foundation, but is also a Realtor. That will take place on February 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Bowen Center. So come on out and learn about a lot of resources and opportunities that are available both to current homeowners, but also to future homeowners, and you'll learn all about accessing down payment assistance, how to access home repair opportunities, how mortgages work, so it's really a how-to discussion and seminar about homeownership and the opportunities that are available to homeowners in our community.
Mayor Grimaldi, your closing comments.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just wanted to mention the timeline for the spending of American Rescue Plan dollars. I know that we talked about this towards the end of last year, when city council allocated different buckets of dollars for different purposes. First of all, I appreciate city council acting on that and approving different allocations of ARPA dollars in terms of big-picture, 10,000-foot view. As we mentioned at the time, and as I want to again mention tonight, the Grants Department is working on developing the specific programs and programming and operations for those different buckets, and they'll be rolling out those specific programs throughout this year. They're going to be doing that on a quarterly basis. This first quarter of 2023, they're going to roll out specific programs for park investments, as well as for home improvement dollars, to assist property owners, families who own their own homes, to access dollars from the city to help them fix up their homes. That's important to do straight out of the gate, early in the year, because we want to have those programs up and operating and available, so that when the weather breaks, homeowners can start utilizing those dollars to improve their homes, some of which may or may not require warm weather, but to the extent that some of that work is likely to be done on the outside of houses, we want to make sure that those dollars are available when the weather breaks. Similarly, we want to make sure that those park improvements, that that investment in park infrastructure is ready to roll with the springtime, so we can maximize the warm weather opportunities for construction in the spring, summer, and fall. Then in the second quarter, we're going to be focused on economic opportunity and economic empowerment, and so it's in the second quarter of this year that the Grants Department will be rolling out programs for workforce development, as well as for small business assistance. So I hear loud and clear the urgency of small businesses in the community who need that assistance, and that will in fact occur in the second quarter of this year, when those programs will be rolled out. As was mentioned tonight, during the thick of COVID, CARES Act dollars came from the federal government to the city and the county, and were made available to businesses for emergency assistance during the COVID pandemic. The ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, that we are looking at spending have a lot more flexibility in terms of how they can be used, but we do want to utilize a substantial amount of those dollars, and council has approved doing so, for small business assistance, and the details around those programs and opportunities will be rolled out and made available to the public in the second quarter of this year. So stay tuned. And then the other initiatives that council has approved will be rolled out in the third quarter and the fourth quarter of this year. So more to come in that regard as well. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Clerk Doyle, closing comments.
No comments, Mr. President.
Councilman Rutherford, closing comments.
Good evening. I want to first say I'm so happy to be back with this body. I also want to remind everybody about the Come On Sis event. I know that our president announced it, but it is next Sunday, which will be at the Pike Room from 2:00 to 5:00. We have five seats available, and the main guest speaker will be none other than, roll, Dr. Sabrina Jackson, and you always see her on Channel 2, Channel 4, and Channel 7. She's the main speaker. We're going to be training on how to recognize when someone is having a mental health crisis, what to do when they're having a mental health crisis. We're going to have an opportunity for you to learn different things you could do, chair yoga, so you can decrease your stress level. We're going to help you also recognize where to find you, the right therapist for you, because therapy is real. Therapy, church, and drinks if you want to, that's a joke, but the whole purpose of it is, that was funny. The whole purpose of it is, is to invite us to have a very candid conversation. So Come On Sis has five spots available. We were originally going to just do 60, but someone so graciously, AKA Brett Nicholson, donated another portion of the funding to help make sure that this is a free event for everybody there. You will be empowered, you will be challenged, but we also will be able to have a real candid conversation. Secondly, I want to also announce that we have our District 1 meeting at the end of the month, the last Saturday of every month, and it's going to be at the Alley Cat, is from 3:00 to 5:00. One of our guest speakers will be none other than Mr. Jim Nash, and also the mayor, and I'm trying to line up with Mr. James Dixon, I haven't finalized that, and he's going to be, and also, we also offer, if you want to get free internet or a free phone, it's all, the people who service that program is actually going to be at the District 1 meeting that I have at the Alley Cat. It's from 2:00 to 5:00 at 31 North Saginaw. Last but certainly not least, last week, because I was not here, I did not get to celebrate my friend and yours, the president, Mr. Mike McGinnis' birthday. It was last week, and so, as we always do as a body, we celebrate our teammates, and so we have cake and chicken and fish for people to come eat, but I just want to say on a personal note, I thank you for your leadership, I thank you for your kindness, I thank you for taking those hard conversations that people don't know you take, and those hard 3:00 in the morning calls that you take from me. I just thank you for being the best president that I know and love, and just want to say happy birthday. And that's it, have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2.
I'll start with happy birthday to President McGinnis. I had to do it one time, and I never want to do it again. It is a nerve-wracking thing to keep up with what you want to say, what's going on in the meeting, and then also maintain this thing called Robert's Rules, which is mind-boggling at times, especially when, when it gets confusing and people have questions and things get off track. I'm glad I sit this far down the line to have to do it, because it was a challenging time, and you do it with such ease, and I appreciate it. Last week, I said thank you to code enforcement and, and the building and safety departments, respectively. This week, DPW has been fantastic in answering the phone every time I call, haven't had to leave a message in the last, you know, couple of weeks, and they answer immediately in regards to sanitation. We've had, you know, confused citizens call, call the GFL line and get confusing information about replacing their bins, or when they've had trucks that have been backing over certain curbs, or when trucks have been leaking some sort of mysterious fluid down their street. And while it does sometimes melt the ice, we certainly don't want to find out or figure out what that is, we want it to stop. But I will say, every time I've called DPW, it's been answered, and immediately they know exactly how to fix it, and then I'm getting calls from residents saying thank you, you know, right away. The other calls that I'm getting, which we know, you know, we've got our first set of reports from code enforcement that showed each one of us in our districts, you know, what code enforcement activities that have been going on, and it is astounding that the code enforcement officer, Clarence Cohen, thank you, thank you, thank you again, who has been assigned to District 2, you know, over 200 in a month of, you know, stops and visits of different code violations that have been going on, and that, those wouldn't, you know, those weren't 200 calls that came in from concerned citizens, this is 200 proactive efforts of them going out, seeing things that could be potentially dangerous or devaluing in our neighborhoods, taking action and getting those rectified. It's been fantastic. And then finally, to the Sheriff's Department, their tag and drag events are the things that I've gotten the most calls on out of anything since I've been a councilperson. You know, that car I've been fixing up for the last six months in front of my house, it's gone. Well, that wasn't a repair shop, so, you know, and it's been leaking oil into the clean water supply. You know, we, that does go out to a river, and it says it on the grate, so, you know, I think, I want to say thank you. It has been just a couple of months of a lot of progress from our, you know, feet-on-the-street crews around the city, and it's making a big difference in District 2, so I appreciate it.
Again, we send our regards to Councilwoman Michael Goodman, in his absence this evening. Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4.
For District 4, we have our District 4 Community Council Meeting on February the 23rd, that's the Fourth Thursday, and I'm kind of concerned that our day is the same day as the Charter Commission Meeting, because I definitely want to be a part of the work that they are doing, so I may have to kind of revisit our meeting, because I definitely want to be able to attend some of those meetings. But right now, our, the District 4 Community Council Meeting is scheduled for the Fourth Thursday, same as the Charter Commission, at 6:00 p.m. We meet at the New Mount Moriah International Church, located at 313 West Walton Boulevard, right across from the Dollar Tree Store. So we invite, everyone is welcome to come out. We've got guests that are going to be there to talk about code enforcement, we're going to be talking about the youth recreation program, and hopefully trying to move some of those activities closer to District 4 communities and residents, so we're looking forward to that meeting. The Parks Recreation and Public Work Subcommittee will meet on Monday, February the 27th, at noon in the Legislative Conference Room, and we will probably be talking about this agreement and partnership that we are trying to work out with Oakland County in regards to Hawthorne Park. It's still a work in progress, and there will be some discussion on that in that meeting, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5.
Thank you, brother president. Just want to first thank our own councilwoman, Pastor James, for giving us our invocation today. I want to ask that you would keep Pastor Emeritus Kathy Deserou in your prayers, as you've noticed, she hasn't been here for a couple of meetings, and that's because she's been under the weather, she was in hospital for a while. We want to wish her well and pray that she's recuperating very nicely. Want to remind everybody and continue to pray for Sister Lucy Payne. She has, she probably won't be in person at our meeting, but she has said that she would be at our district meeting, District 5 meeting, which is this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. down in the Lions Den at City Hall. We certainly have a very invigorating agenda planned, we're certainly going to talk a little bit about some of the meetings and plans we have for Galloway Parks, we look forward to everybody coming there, as well as having some other surprise guests that are coming to discuss some of the things that are going on around the city, so I look forward to seeing everyone there. I also want to thank code enforcement and DPW, particularly DPW for, at least for District 5, all the streets that I went down seemed to have good snow removal during the big snowstorm, and they kept it removed, for the most part, as best they could, so I want to certainly thank DPW for that, and I want to thank the guys who continue to fill in and do code enforcement, even in this brutal weather, sometimes they're still out there doing what we asked them to do, and so I want to thank them for that. And certainly, I want to thank administration and this council for continuing to move this cities forward expeditiously, and as, with integrity as we best possibly can. So have a great evening, everybody, and look forward to seeing District 5 at our meeting this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. in the City Hall Lions Den.
Thank you. William A. Carrington, Council President Pro Tem, District 6.
Thank you, President McGinnis, and definitely happy birthday. It's been a great day today, and I'm just so excited. 50 degrees, it's not, it's not, it's not so too cold, and I was able to not freeze coming in City Hall today. But this month is Black History Month, and it's a very important month to me, and I also believe in celebrating that every day of the year, not just February. And as you look around our chambers, as well as if you come into City Hall, you see the history from our national treasures, as well as the City of Pontiac treasures, and I'm someone that moved here about 12 years ago. So when I walked in, I'm just, it's astonishing for me of what I've seen on the wall, the history that I didn't know, but I'm looking forward to going to each board in this month, and actually learning all the great history of the City of Pontiac. She says south side, okay. Also, this past weekend, I want to actually celebrate the Pontiac High School Phoenix couple of wrestlers that became OAA League Champions this past weekend. The strong and powerful Adam Polk, he became a champion, as well as Corey Thomas Jr., he came a champion as well. And if you get a chance to really celebrate and watch this small wrestling team, small, maybe eight wrestlers, go into these invitations and come out champions, it's just powerful. And I've been following this team for approximately about a decade now, and just to see a small team actually create champion after champion every year is just astonishing, and they're great ambassadors for the City of Pontiac. And I want to close on that.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7. Really grateful for the birthday wishes. I'm 39 and feeling fine. The next District 7 meeting for the East Side is next Monday, February 13th, 7:00 p.m., and that's at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 351 Prospect Street, at the corner of Sanford and, you guessed it, Prospect. So please join us, all are welcome. We'll have a few different guest speakers and feedback from residents on what they are seeing on the ground, progress, but also areas for improvement. Mr. Johnson, an esteemed resident of District 7, asked the question about where public comment falls on the agenda, and we very intentionally make sure that agenda address comes first, so that way, if someone's speaking to something before, we don't want to make people wait after we vote, we want you to be able to help shape and provide feedback. We want you to be able to help shape and provide feedback before the vote actually happens. So we make sure that agenda address happens pretty early on before votes happen. And then we hold the business of the meeting. And we want to make sure that city council meetings move efficiently and we handle the votes because if we do public comment first, we might do a double, double hit of public comment and agenda address first. The benefit, the pro, is that more people would be able to anticipate, oh, I can come earlier on, I can speak, I can peace out, or at least I can be heard. The, the con, the negative of that is that we might push the agenda items or the business sometimes multiple hours down. And the challenge with that is that, as you probably detected, we often have staff, city staff members who are waiting to give us the information and the residents the information, they're speaking to that item. So if we make that item come hours later, then we are essentially taking our staff members and forcing them to stay many hours later. And some of these business items require attorneys. So we're paying taxpayers money, sometimes upwards of hundreds of dollars because we're waiting for, essentially to get that legal advice. So that's a few of the reasons why we want to make sure that it's not dismissed. We want to make sure it's respected and has the time carved out on the agenda and we've kept the three minutes. But we also have moved it in the last year so that way, when council meeting, council members have discussions, we put that under public comment. We do the announcements after public comment. And then ultimately, the mayor and the council, we get the lowest part of the totem pole and yours truly comes last, last. So we respect and acknowledge that we want to do that balancing act, where we want the business of the city to be able to hurt, be heard, and the residents to be heard. And the way that we try and balance that is that agenda address comes first. So that way, for anything that will be voted on, we don't want to wait after the fact for you to be able to have your voice heard and potentially influence the outcome of those votes. But we also don't want to take those very serious items and push those towards the end because then we might, one, we might start losing quorum, we might start losing, you know, people's attention, or for example, staff or attorneys, the people that we need those information from, it might make it even more burdensome for them to be able to be here to give us, AKA the community of Pontiac, the information we need to make decisions. So we try and be really mindful about how do we keep tweaking it? And there, there may be further adjustments that happen as, as time goes forward, but that's the, the balancing act that we're trying to strike, where we do the business of the people while being able to make sure there's multiple opportunities for the people to be heard. I in part have added these, you know how I go through the communications at the end, the announcements? That's done in part so that way people don't have to feel like they have to wait for hours to get their announcement in. We're essentially, because I remember, you know, as a citizen over the years, that's part of the challenge. People are waiting for public comment to announce something or, you know, invite the community out. A lot of these things that you see, we receive those for commute, from community members. So that way, it's in one fell swoop, there's, you know, dates, times, numbers for more information, all right there to try and make that more efficient, but also to try and make sure that we're making the most of residents' time so they can get their announcement out there, but they don't necessarily have to wait for whenever public comment may fall. So that's some of the perspective and we'll keep analyzing and reviewing it, but we do welcome and we hear your feedback on where your perspective is on that. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So move.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by, was it Nicholson first? Councilman Nicholson to adjourn this evening's meeting, hearing no discussion. Ah, I am going to say that next week, next week, next week, February 16th, our meeting again is not on Tuesday, it is on Thursday. So that way, your Valentine's Day is uninterrupted. And at February 16th, we will be celebrating a very special part of the Pontiac team and that's none other than Legislative Council Monique Sharp. But tune in to the February 16th to learn more and to celebrate her leadership and work for the city and citizens of Pontiac. So with that, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Yeah, yes. Shame, baby, shame. That's that fifth.
The motion fails as it was not unanimous. No, I just, that motion carries. We stand adjourned at 7:50 p.m. before 8:00 p.m.
That's right.